Okay, good afternoon, late afternoon, and I want to call the order, the Monday, October 20th, 2025, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and we'll do our pledge, and then I will have our pastor, I'm sorry, we're going to have our sheriff, Bill Wickie, to come forward for our invocation. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
...
The Book of John, Chapter 15, verse 12, finds Jesus at the Last Supper, and he's speaking with his disciples, and he says this, "This is my commandment, that you love one another as I have loved you." Greater love has no one than this, than someone who would lay down his life for his friends. The interesting translation in this verse of Scripture, we always presume, "lay down" means to give your physical life, as Christ did, but it's actually, in a much broader context, as Christ talks about love, laying down your life also means, while you have life, to commit it to service of your friends and those around you. No one really knew this better than a guy by the name of Sergeant Albert Allen. Sergeant Allen passed earlier this week, and he was somewhat of an icon around our office. Some of you may recall that he came and spoke briefly at one of our Commissioner meetings here not too long ago, and you saw his spirit there, and it's a spirit that he carried with him everywhere he went. I can remember very clearly times, sitting in my office, dealing with the things that sheriffs tend to deal with, and Albert would come by and peek his head in, say, "Sheriff, do I need to pray with you?" I never turned him down. He had a genuine love for this community, he had a genuine love for the people whose lives he was able to touch, and he was a great example to us all, and no doubt, he knew and understood the commandment to love first. I would like, if you're so willing to join me, in a very brief prayer, in honor Sergeant Deputy Albert Allen, and the commitment to Haywood County that he gave, as both a state trooper throughout his entire life, and then of course, as a Haywood County Sheriff's Deputy Sergeant. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the example of a life, the 78 years by Albert Allen, who committed his life to his friends as a living sacrifice, to go forth and protect this community, to keep our highway safe, and to put himself in harm's way, so that others did not have to step into harm's way. I pray, Lord, that you would instill in us the same amount of love, dedication, and commitment, and that you would convict us to lay down our lives and service to our friends and to those around us, the same way that Albert did, so that our community may be safe, and may remain the great place that we know, that we live in, that we work in, that we fellowship in. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen?
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. I know Albert helped me through some, helped me understand some personal tragedy, and I always appreciated his professionalism and compassion, and his witness also. So, he was a really great man. Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing, we don't have that, and I have no one signed up for public comment, I don't believe, okay? And next will be constituent concerns, and does anybody, Jen, do you have anything, Jen, that you wanted to comment on?
I had a couple issues, and I had the county manager take care of it, so that resolved.
Okay, okay, good deal. Okay, our next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations, and tonight we have Haywood Christian Ministry update, and we have their director, Blake Hart, here tonight, to let us know some of the great things they've been doing. And welcome, Blake, appreciate you putting this together and coming up. I had attended one of these at, about a month ago or so, and I thought it'd be great if Blake could come and share this with us, because I think a lot of people need to know what's available out there for them, and then maybe they can help others in the same way, so, thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Commissioner Insley, and thank you for, all the commissioners for this time, this opportunity to share. I thought it would be nice to share a lot of the updates that have happened in Haywood Christian Ministry since Hurricane Helene, and seeing as how we are about one year from that disaster, I wanted to start with talking about what we did immediately after the hurricane. And so thankfully, right before the flood happened, Manor Food Bank had emptied a lot of their warehouses, I think, foreseeing what was about to come at their warehouses that were destroyed. And so we had a large amount of food. And so directly the weekend right after the flood happened, we were able to coordinate with the Lake Juneauleska Assembly, and were able to get a lot of food to them when they were having, struggling with supply chain issues, so they could prepare food for the first responders and for the people staying at the armory. Immediately after that, we began outreach to some local farms that we work with on a regular basis, and partially just to do well checks, make sure that they are okay, and make sure that they were doing well, and to see if there are any ways that we could support them. The picture you see on this slide is actually from our visit that day, the Sunday after the flood, to Two Tree Farms in Canton. They had suffered a mudslide, and that's, you can see, he is walking across the mudslide in that moment. But they also had a lot of stuff that they had just harvested, and they were really concerned about getting it to people who needed it. And so we began those outreach, to see, outreaches to those farms, to see what we could do to help them. Quickly, when we realized how much market was going to be lost to those farms, we were able to allocate some funding that we had, and the donations that were coming in, to be able to purchase at-market rate farm goods from local producers, to be able to give away, to prevent that market loss, and to make sure that everybody had food. As well, we also realized that, in the first days when we first opened back up to the public after the flood, our numbers at Haywood Christian Ministry right over here behind the parking garage, our numbers were extremely low, and it was because it was difficult to get to us. And so we began networking with a bunch of different agencies around the county to get food to them, so that they could get food into the communities more effectively than we could. And so that's what we sort of focused on at the very beginning of the flood, and we began to develop that out more and more. So in the first three months, so October through December, we were able to distribute 314,000 pounds of food in Haywood County, 20% of that was locally purchased, so about 6,000, 64,500 pounds of food was locally purchased. We were able to work with 34 partners, so those are, some of those are longstanding agencies, like the community centers, like Pathways, a lot of those longstanding centers in the communities, but also lots of churches that just sort of popped up and started helping their neighbors in need. So we connected with 34 agencies, and were able to connect and feed in those communities, as well as through our own pantry. And we also connected with 33 farms in the area, and in those three months, we were able to prevent $130,000 of market loss by buying local produce. To date, that number is now up to $350,000 that we have provided to local farms. But what we realized really quickly is that both of these programs that we sort of had developed in the crisis were things that we really needed to keep going. We really needed to keep supporting our local farms, while also ensuring that that food got to people across the county and not just here in Waynesville proper. And so that birthed two new programs, the Smoky Mountain Harvest Hub and the Rural Food Access Network. So on these two things, the mission of the Smoky Mountain Harvest Hub is to support our local, small-scale food producers through the aggregation of product, the increase of cold storage in the county, through commissary kitchen spaces, compost production, and other targeted interventions aimed at improving market access and farm productivity and profitability. And then, the mission of the Rural Food Access Network is to ensure that all neighbors have access to the best food available through innovative food distribution strategies that mutually benefit agency partners around Haywood County. So this helps us to expand our own food pantry. So our food pantry here in Waynesville serves annually 6,000 unique people. They can come any day of the week that they need to get food, but 6,000 unique people come over the course of the year. And through this partnership with other agencies, we're able to expand that even more. So in the pictures you can see on these slides, the first one there is our new facility in Bethel, we were able to acquire in January. It houses both the Harvest Hub and the infrastructure behind the Rural Food Access Network. The second picture there is actually at the Pigeon Multicultural, Pigeon Community Multicultural Development Center, and in front of their bus there, you can see a locker, and those are, that's one of our five refrigerated locker systems that have gone in around the county, that are launching in the county, we partnered with for two of those sites, one at the Canton Library and one in Fines Creek. And those will hopefully be up and running in the next few weeks, so that people can get access to food anywhere they, or anytime they need it in those communities. So they would order the food from us, it would be stocked, and then they could 24/7 go and pick that up at any time that is convenient to them. So these two pictures here show the inside of our Harvest Hub. The first picture on the left there, you can see the pallet racks. In the very back, you can't see it, there are two large coolers, 1,000 square foot each. One's frozen and one's refrigerated. And then the second picture there is the inside of one of those freezer units. And so you can see there that, on the signs, it's, you know, local pork, local beef, local chicken, things that we were getting from local producers, and the stack of boxes there is, we're storing it for an agency, actually, this one in Jackson County, because they don't have cold storage enough themselves. And so by having these shared resources, we can increase not only our own capacity, but the capacity of all other food agencies in the area. And so now, a lot of that is amazing, great things that we're very excited about, but one of the questions I often get a lot is, how did we fund it? And that sort of shifts us a little bit to talk about the Healthy Opportunities Pilot Program. And so that program also has HOP. It was that program that allowed us the dexterity and flexibility to be able to quickly innovate and produce these outcomes in our communities. And so I just wanted to go into a little bit of what that was. The NC HOP program, the goal of the NC HOP is to reduce Medicaid expenses by addressing what are called the social determinants of health. So in other words, making people healthier by focusing on food, housing, transportation, and violence. And that by improving those realities in people's lives, we make them healthier and reduce the cost of insurance. So the way it worked is that we would get a referral from a care manager, referring somebody to us for food or housing assistance, we would provide that service to that individual. Normally, over six to 12 months, we would provide that service, and Medicaid would reimburse us the cost of the service plus administrative fees. Millions of dollars were invested in this pilot program, but even accounting for those investments, the outcomes are that each, the state saved $1,020 per person per year who was enrolled in it. ER utilization was reduced in all counties that participated in the pilot program. And then most, what we found out too, is that most nonprofits like ourselves invested that money very locally. And so, as you can see here, these are the agencies that took part in Haywood County, or that are taking part in Haywood County alongside us. But through ourselves alone, we have, were able to invest $50,000, $500,000, sorry, on food purchases. The vast majority of that went to small local businesses, local grocers, small farms, fruit and vegetable stands, such as Presnell's, Duckett's, Christopher Farms. Most of those purchases went to those locations. We were able to do $900,000 of home remediation services, so those are things like fixing leaking plumbing, doing mold remediations in houses to help control asthma, making sure that people had accessible living if they had, if they had a disability. And then $600,000 on financial or material assistance. So that's things like moving assistance, helping people get a bed for their kids who don't have beds, things like that, all to promote the healthy lifestyle of individuals. And it was a, if I can say so myself, the program statewide was a huge success. Currently, the program is paused in our state because of the lack of a biennial budget from the state legislature. And so both for-profit and nonprofit organizations have felt the impact of that cessation, not to mention the countless number of individuals who were getting the services. Jobs have been lost, both in our for-profit and not-for-profit spaces, and there are people who, you know, were in the pipeline to get food service that now don't get it, and they're in the pipeline to get housing assistance, and they are no longer going to get it, until the program is restarted. And so that gets me to, my primary ask tonight is just for everybody, not just for the commissioners, but for the entire population of Haywood County, to help us to encourage our state-elected officials to include full funding for HOP. It's one of those few programs that really did everything it set out to do. It increased people's health, it reduced the cost of healthcare in the state, and it really invested millions into local economies, so, thank you very much.
Okay, Blake, I was just wanting to, some of us might have some questions for you. I was just wanting to comment, you know, Blake, when you came to Haywood Christian Ministries, you, one thing that I noticed that you did very well was go after grants that are out there and available. And the grant you talked about was, you'd gotten a grant, I'm pretty sure, that, that money that you used to pay the farmers for food, whenever Helene hit. So basically, they had produce that was, they were going to give away. And actually, they contacted you, was going to give it to you, and you said, "No, we have a program where we can pay for that," that you'd gotten a grant for. And so those farmers were able to sell their produce at a devastating time, and not just give it away, you know, and they were able to get it, and I just want to thank you for that. And I know the Smoky Mountain Harvest Hub, that's in Bethel, and it's not in a floodplain. So it's going to be safe, you know, whenever, if it floods or anything, so. But you guys have done a great job in getting, you know, the food out to where it needs. And, you know, we waste so much food, even the supermarkets and Walmarts and these other places, they basically throw the food away, but, you know, we've been pro, or Haywood Christian Ministries have been proactive to go get that as much as you can, and distribute it, you know, to where it can be used for what it was intended to be used for, and not just be thrown away into the landfill. So not only does it help people, it helps their landfill by you not, you know, doing that, so. But I wanted to thank you for that, and what you're asking us to do is, I think we did a resolution, I believe, to sign to our state legislatures to make sure that they keep this program going that it started, because it shows good results, and it's one of those, if you're going to support a program and it's not having results, then you'd get rid of it, but when it's giving good results, and remarkable results, we need to keep it going, and that's what, that's what this will be, that we'll be signing tonight, so. But I just wanted to thank you for that, and I don't know if anybody else had any questions or not.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will say, I had an impromptu visit down to the food hub in Bethel, back in April. The staff fair was so, so accommodating, I had a, I had a need, and they helped me with a need, and they gave me a tour, and was sharing with me a lot of the information that you gave, and I saw some very excited people that were working down there and maybe donating some of their time to help other people. And the very word, Haywood Christian Ministries, the root word there, Christ, you are the hands and feet of Jesus, and you show the love of Jesus and the community, and you help people that are in drastic need. And I saw people that were just so happy to be doing that work down there. And my church, we refer folks, we, you know, when folks need help, when we kind of get tapped out or overloaded, you're on our list, you know, to send folks in need to, hey, check out Haywood Christian Ministries and see if they can help, and they've, you've been a great partner to help people, not, not just during the flood, but, I mean, and a well-oiled machine, I must say, you're, you know, you, some nonprofits, this, this is run very professionally, and, you know, people that want to donate or help with that cause, you know, I look at that, and it's a very well-oiled machine, it has to be, you know, with the food coming in and out, it has to, it has to keep moving, so. I appreciate all the help that you give people in the community, and you're such a help to this county, and as has been said. You know, sometimes it's the things behind the scenes that nobody ever really gives any accolades to or for, that really make a difference, and, and you know, not, people, people that are helping are not really looking to stick their chest out and pat yourself on the back and look for accolades, but they're kind of unsung heroes, and I think there's a lot of folks that work with you guys that fit in that category, so, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you for everything that you do for the community, and I think it's a great opportunity to spread the word about programs like this, because I believe there are folks in our community that just maybe think you're a resale store or a place to drop donations, and it's good to see how you actually have boots on the ground, if you will. And it's not just being recipients of money, it is seeing how that, how you can use those services, maybe with folks that wouldn't necessarily be your ideal customer, for example. And so Tommy and I both have farms, and I appreciate, just from a farmer's standpoint, that, that you're putting those resources to good work and that they're, they're being used locally, so. Thanks for the information. I'm also a member of the library board, and we've recently set one of the food lockers in the Canton Library, I believe, and that's been, it's convenient, you know, people are very familiar with it, and it just continues to reach the community in all of the right ways, so. Thanks for being innovative and creative in the things that you do, and reaching out to, like I said, those folks who might not be your, you know, your ideal customer.
Thank you very much, thanks.
No, I just appreciate the comments from the other commissioners, I couldn't have said it no better. So, just to add to what they said, thank you for what you do and who you stand for. I know that during the flood, you come to the table, literally, and, and it's appreciated, and I think Commissioner Long said it as well, not only during the flood, but throughout the year. You're there before, and you're there after, so, appreciate your stance, you're in the community. And I guess if people want to come to you, reach out, how's the best way to get ahold of you? Is it email, a phone, or coming by?
Yes, the best way, it depends on what you're looking for, I guess, is the way to answer it. Our website is hcmnc.org, that's where you can find any of the information that you need, normally speaking. Our food pantry, like downtown, is located right here behind the thrift store, and it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at different hours of the day. But I would say our phone number is 828-456-4838, so if anyone wants to call that number, they can sort of get guided to whomever they need to talk to for different reasons.
I'm amazed at how many people actually watch our meetings. We ran into a gentleman last week, said he watches about every one of them, and I guess they've got a boring life or something, I don't know, but probably good, they do, they do keep up with us and keep up with what's going on in the community. I say that jokingly, but it is important, I guess, to keep up with what your elected officials are doing. But a lot of people watch this, so getting that information out, I think's important, but thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
And then also, Blake, I just wanted to, the businesses that donate, why don't we give them a plug? Like the supermarkets and the people that donate the food and stuff, who all would that be?
So our retail partners that we get food from right now, the Walmart here in Waynesville, the Food Lion, and Publix here in Waynesville, and those pickups are split between us and other agencies in the area, so we don't do it every day, but those are the three that we get here in Waynesville. We are also able to pick up at Sam's Club in Asheville, and we actually will also go to Weaverville Walmart, we used to be twice a week, but once a week now, to get food.
And you've got, and you've got volunteers that do that, maybe some paid staff, I believe, but I just wanted to put those businesses out there, and you might want to shop there, because, you know, it takes a lot of extra effort, it'd be easier just throwing away, I'm sure, but it takes a lot of effort for these businesses to call you, to wait for you to come, and then have that ready for you to be there when you get there, so, we really appreciate those. And then, now, the food lockers, if somebody wants to do, I think you probably talked about it, but if somebody wanted to do a food locker, and what you do is, they, just kind of explain.
Yeah, so, so right now, the food lockers are, we're in the, sort of the soft-launch phase of those, so people will apply to be a part of it, and they'll get the information of how to then order food. And so then, once they get in the system, they'll order food from the locker within, I think it's like within 48 hours, the food will be put in the locker for them, they're refrigerated lockers. And so once the food gets put in the locker, that person receives a text message or an email, email stating that the food is ready for them, and they have either a numeric code they can put in or a QR code that they scan when they get there. And so then it's refrigerated, it's kept, you know, food safe until they come and get it. At the onset, we'll do that, each location has nine doors on it, nine locker doors. And so our goal is to do each location at least once a week, and then, you know, up it as we have capacity to do more. Yeah, so people will order that food online, and then they'll just receive notification that it's ready for them.
Okay, and then, you know, a lot of, a lot of food that's given out is either processed or carb, carb-filled, but you guys are actually giving away produce, and then I think milk and meat also. So, so I just want everybody to know that, this is just not, that's why these, you've probably gotten a lot of these grants is because it's healthy food, that's generally really expensive. I mean, if you buy the processed food, it'll, it'll keep a lot longer, but it's not as good for you. But the fresh stuff, and you guys do that, you know, and you go to the extra effort of having refrigerators and freezers and be able to do that, so. But did you have someone else coming?
Excellent, excellent question and an excellent answer, because there, you clarified that that's a safe, a safe venue for the food, there's somebody looking over it, because, you know, early on, some of those food lockers weren't very well attended, and there was some questions about the integrity of it, but I'm so glad that you asked that question, and it's a great, great answer.
I'll also share that they are, for those who are curious about that as well, they are temperature-controlled, even to the point to where we get notification if a door was left ajar, so we can go close it, so we don't waste electricity. They're also video-monitored, and so we can see everything that happens at the lockers at any time.
And there's an application process for that?
So there is, it's just an application, so we can get your information and get you the access to the right locker closest to you. But yeah, there, it's not, there's no eligibility requirements outside of, we're trying to-
That's what I was asking for.
Yeah, there's no eligibility requirement outside of, we're trying to make sure that we get people who, for one reason or another, can't make it to a pantry. So either you have transportation issues, you're working nine to five and can't make it during business hours. So those are like the qualifications that we're looking for, but there's no restriction.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Tremendous service.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, Blake, we really appreciate it, appreciate the service y'all do. And once again, that's HMNC, so that's Haywood Christian Ministries, North Carolina, so hmnc.org, if you want to get there, so. Oh, you need to come up here, he's with Haywood Christian Ministries, so. I meant to have you come up, tell us your name and what you do for Haywood Christian Ministries also, because you were a big part of this.
Thank you for giving me the time, I sort of interrupted. Yeah, I'm John Brigeaux, I'm Development Director for Haywood Christian Ministry. I've been here, I started about two or three weeks before the hurricane, so it was trial by fire. We got over a million dollars in contributions in a short period of time from all over America. It was unbelievable. A 10-year-old girl in Ohio makes friendship bracelets, she sells them to her friends. She sent us a check through her grandmother, who lives in Lake Jay, for $400. To me, that speaks volumes. But what I was just going to say real quick, our Facebook and our Instagram accounts, we have a 24-year-old young person, is there any other kind, who is our social media guru, and she is updating that thing constantly, so you're going to see daily, minute-by-minute information on ours, what we're doing, where we are, et cetera, so, just Haywood Christian Ministry, search Facebook or Instagram. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Don. Okay. And once again, that number is 828-456-4838. 456-4838. Okay, thank y'all very much. Okay, our next order of business will be our discussion adjustment of agenda. I don't have anything, does anybody else have anything they want? Okay. Anything, right? Okay. You're looking at me over your glasses like, okay. Okay, only consent agenda, which is about all of our meeting, is our 11 items, and does anybody have any questions about those 11 items? Questions or comments?
I guess I do, Chairman. On item number seven, I believe it is, just to clarify, I know Graham's here, you can probably answer this question best, but is these funds, all these funds been pulled from the lottery money? I, I'm curious about this one.
Yes, Commissioner Enslie, Commissioners, so like, like you'd said, so this, on your consent agenda number seven, is a request from our board to access our R and R, which are repair and renovation lottery funds. So that is the same lottery funds that the other lottery funds are, but there's two different pots. Prior to 2021, there was just one lottery fund. In 2021, the state added in the repair and renovation fund, which at the time sounded great. It was going to be more money, a different pot that we could access for things such as this project. However, over time, the amount of money we were getting in the one fund has kind of split to the same amount of money, but now it's just split between two different funds. And the funds are very similar, like with all the other lottery funds, we can't use it for operations or, you know, salaries, anything like that. It's got to be used for renovating, repairing, expanding classrooms or our buildings. This fund is a little more restrictive than the regular lottery fund. For example, the regular lottery fund, we can use to do tracks, which you all approved last year or the year before, I believe it was, our turf fields, things like that, because those spaces are still considered classrooms because our PE classes go use those spaces during the day. But the repair and, or the repair and renovation funds, you can't use for anything athletic-related. So that's just one stipulation between the two. But aside from a few things, they're essentially the same. But this is the first time that I'm aware of that we have used the repair and renovations fund, so I appreciate the question.
Yeah, I just, that's the first time I ever called it as well, so I was just curious if, and, and it's good to see that we're actually getting, getting some funds from the lottery money, you know. I know we had a big discussion here a few meetings ago about that, and I think to most people's surprise, there's very little, or a small percentage of the monies that we actually get. I know it's advertised as the lottery money, or the educational, yeah, money, but very, very small percentage, so thank you for the clarification on that.
You're welcome. I thought you might bring that up, and I, I looked actually before I came, and on the Department of Public Instruction's website, it says that about 30% of the lottery revenue goes to education, but the latest numbers that I was able to pull, which is 23, 24, it was only about 20%. So of the 5.38 billion sales that they had, education only received about 1.1 billion of that, so.
Something we got to work on for sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can understand half of it going to the winners, but the other half, there's, yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. But I mean, it is the education lottery, so it'd be good if they would put that out, so.
It would be good, we'd appreciate it. Any other questions on that project or those funds?
Well, you didn't come in vain, Ray, and we could have just blew through it, and you'd have just said, "Man, I wasted my time."
Could have, hey, I'm here either way. Happy to answer any questions you need.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank y'all, we appreciate it.
Okay, you know the questions on, anything on the-
Just a couple, just a couple comments. Item six and eight, I guess, thank you, thank you as an order. You know, if somebody gives you a gift, you know, we should be appreciative. So thank you to the Mountain Projects Group who gave us a Ford Transit van. And then item eight, those folks at the $3,000, the community centers, I'll, I'll go ahead and read their names out. Beaver Down Community Center, Bethel Community Center, Public Library Foundation, Haywood County. They purchased three information signs to be placed at the Canton Library and the aforementioned community center, so thank you for those donations.
I think you got some folks here tonight, don't we? Yeah, appreciate that, guys. Thank you, Carol. I saw Ted and Pat back there. Okay, any other questions or comments?
We, we actually have the Employee of the Month here, I believe. So, Haywood County, I recognize her.
Okay. Very good.
I was just going to mention, item number two is the resolution and the letters of support for the HOP program.
Just wanted to mention that?
Yeah, just that that's where it was in the, it's item number two. Request approval of resolution and support.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, only entertaining motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Done.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you want to post. That's unanimous. Our only other item is on the regular agenda. I think Haven glued them together. She's not listening. Okay, item number one is to request acceptance and approval of a bid provided by Rise Construction through the formal bidding process in the amount of $2,069,955 for a base bid on the Cloud Armory Campus Project, and approval for the county manager to engage Rise for any and all alternative bid items to the limit of the awarded CDBG grant pending CDBG approval of the bid. And our facilities director, Tim Sisk, and finance director, Christian Owens, time to talk to them. Welcome, Tim. That was a mouthful.
Has a mouthful. Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for having me. This is for Phase Two and Phase Three of the Armory Project, again, fully funded by the CDBG grant. So I'll just open the floor for questions.
What you gonna be doing?
Yeah. Excuse me?
So what you gonna be doing with all that money?
Okay, so the, the, the project will consist of several components. The, the main building that we're going to be adding will be for ambulance storage to, you know, offset the needs that we have for our EMS base. Inside the Armory Facility itself, a lot of components for shelter. Anybody that was there during Helene knows that sound deadening panels in the, in the drill hall are necessary, a lot of renovation to the bathrooms to bring them up to ADA standards. The shower facility on the lower level, we will be adding some petitions in there so that more folks can, you know, benefit from those, new plumbing fixtures, things of that nature, paint throughout, additional, additional cameras, additional HVAC equipment for areas that we were not able to get during Phase One. A lot of grade work and site development around the facility, and new, new asphalt going up to the building. That's kind of the broad strokes.
I think we're really lucky to have this, this building and this facility, and I think it showed its merit when, you know, it was kind, kind of timely when it made itself available during Hurricane Helene.
Yeah, I think we were able to set up and have a full, full-scale test in August of last year, yeah.
Yeah.
Tim, are you going to be able to do anything with the area where the shooting range was, where it ramped sort of goes down?
The area where the shooting range was.
In the front park back there, where the-
In the basement.
Uh, the, the basement, we've got quite a bit of development inside, inside the building. There's a, there'll be a road that goes all the way around, so ambulance can, the ambulance vehicles can drive through the building and come around the building, Commissioner Amy. Inside the lower level, again, HVAC, paint, and upgrade to all the restrooms. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yeah, I just wondered if you'll be able to use that space there.
We're going to be able to use all the space. Everything will be developed and usable, absolutely.
Right, you knew where it was, the shooting range.
The shooting range is sort of, is where we already have some water still from the, from the storm and-
We have pallet racks, we have pallet racks down both sides now, so it's, it's going to be hugely used for palletized goods. And, and part of this grant will support a lithium ion forklift so that we can move palletized goods while people are sleeping in the building and not have a fueled vehicle. That's, that's part of this grant as well. We tried to look at it in a-
Very good.
Tried to look at it in the, the broad spectrum of shelter and EMS, those are the two main things. And the alternate items that you mentioned, Commissioner Enslie, was, you know, the potential for a walking cooler, it should be in your package, being able to put a coating on the, the recreation floor for a non-skid, you know, a non-slip surface. So we're, we're really hoping that we can get some of those alternate items funded as well.
This was a grant from the, so.
Yep, yeah.
Who worked on the grant, by the way? I was just-
A lot of the grant work came from Christian Patricia Cantrell, she's no longer with the county, and McGill Associates, that's our grants administrator.
Okay. Okay. I know David Francis had a lot.
David, David was instrumental on the front end, getting this thing kind of took off, and then once he, once it got under its own speed and under its own steam, Karen Kena, Mark Cathy, the team at McGill, and then the, the team here in the finance department.
Well, I know that that facility was invaluable during the Helene.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the emergency shelter, people had a place to stay, shower. It was, it was very much used, had a kitchen, so it, and we had almost 100 people there, I think.
A little over, at, at one point, I think we were a little over 100 people, yeah.
Okay, so it was very, very much utilized, and I, I would, I would hate to have thought where we would have had to have had them otherwise, but it worked out really perfectly.
The high school or somewhere.
Yeah.
But you know, even in the, even on a, on a good day, on a blue sky day like we have today, it serves as an EMS base in the center of the county and gets our EMS folks back in a, you know, they're, they're working a lot more than they're sitting around most days, but it gets a good space, center of the county, gets them out quicker and faster, and it, you know, that building serve, it serves a lot of purposes even if it's not in an emergency, so.
This, this project will house those ambulances that we haven't had the opportunity to, to this point at that location. So we're, again, we're covering a lot of, a lot of ground with this, with this project.
That location, being where it's at, right there in the center of the county, makes a huge difference, don't it?
I think so, yeah.
The beauty of all that is, it was gifted to us.
Yeah.
And we're getting some funds now that's also been gifted to us, renovated, so it's win-win. And we failed to mention too, the recreation folks can use that. They're all excited to finally have a space, you know, that they can call home. A lot of people confuse us with Waynesville Rec, but this is the county rec.
Yeah, I think they're really excited about the space as well.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Okay. Only entertaining motion, we approve the only item, item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you have the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you want to post?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, I don't have appointments or a closed session. And you said we had the Employee of the Month? Who? So we want to recognize the Employee of the Month, Brian, tell us who that is.
Sorry. She may balk at it. Jennifer Stewart's here from the library, probably unrelated, but now she's in the hot seat, so.
And she, you know, they can, they can put these cameras on you so that, you know, everybody can see you, so, okay. Well, congratulations, we appreciate you, your service for the county.
Jennifer does a great job. She is the, I guess, the lead librarian in Canton, and she's very passionate about what she does and just a great, works well with our community, so, thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, I appreciate all this library does, for sure.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the guest that you invited, it was a great presentation. And to the comment that Commissioner Rogers made about somebody must be bored, but to watch the meeting, well, the county attorney and I, we, we try to spice the meeting up occasionally and add a little sauce to it and make it a little entertaining, so. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Queen?
There's a pool going on right now. I think the, the bet was a quarter-
No, Frank.
Per, what?
Frank, no.
Oh, no problem.
That's Tom.
No, nothing further. Okay.